I want you to turn off any cell phones, excuse me. If need be, you can leave them on vibrate or silent. This time we'll call in General Kroll for our invocation.
Hail your heads please. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this beautiful day. We thank thee for the opportunity to be here in your name. We thank thee for the blessings that continue to bestow upon each and every one of us. We ask for thy divine presence in each and every one of our lives. We ask that you would lead us and guide us in thy righteous path. Help us to do that which is right. We thank thee, heavenly Father. These blessings and prayers, we pray in thy name. Amen.
Amen, thank you General. This time I will ask Mr. Patterson of our staff to present the three, or outline of the three advisory opinions. If there's anyone here who does not have a copy that would like to be reviewing those, they will be provided to you. And I want to state specifically that I had asked the staff not to advocate for any particular opinion, but to simply offer these as drafts.
Yes sir. At the commission's request, we've drafted these opinions for this question presented below. The question is, is whether the Ethics Commission staff is required to disclose exculpatory information and impeachment evidence, also known as Brady material, to respondents who have had complaints filed against them alleging a violation of the Ethics Act or the Fair Campaign Practices Act. The Office of the Attorney General of Alabama has written this office to convey their conclusion that the commission is legally obligated to produce exculpatory information, as well as impeachment evidence, to all respondents with cases before the commission. The statutes and administrative rules governing the commission, however, require that all materials filed with the commission or discovered during investigation be kept confidential pursuant to Alabama's grand jury laws. And in light of the nature of evidence in cases before the commission, the differing opinions that prosecutors may have with respect to what evidence may or may not be considered exculpatory or impeachment evidence subject to the Brady rule, and whether Brady material is required to be produced in a pre-grand jury setting by an accusatory body, it is necessary that the commission fulfill its statutory obligation to interpret the Ethics Act and the administrative rules governing the production of obligations of the commission pursuant to Alacoat Section 36-25-4A9. In response to the conclusion drawn by the Attorney General, the commission must determine whether the Ethics Act and administrative rules require the production of Brady material considering the function that the commission serves as a pre-grand jury accusatory body that does not have the authority to determine guilt or deprive any person of life, liberty, or property. If there is such a requirement, the commission must determine whether to require an open-file system of discovery, which would conflict with the statutory mandate that our investigations be protected from disclosure except as provided for in Alabama Rules of Criminal Procedure 16.1, or make a determination on a case-by-case basis and specifically direct the staff to disclose Brady material in the same way that circuit court judges in Alabama may. The commission finds itself in the position of having to resolve the statutory mandates that the laws of due process shall apply in all matters that come before the commission, and that a complaint, together with any statement, evidence, or information received by the complainant, witnesses, or other persons, shall be protected by and subject to the same restrictions relating to secrecy and non-disclosure of information, conversation, knowledge, or evidence of Sections 12-16-214 to 216. And it issues these opinions, one of these opinions, to provide such guidance. All complaints, statements, evidence, and other information that the Ethics Commission receives in any investigatory activities conducted by the commission staff are protected by grand jury secrecy, and such restrictions also shall apply to all information and evidence supplied to the Attorney General or the district attorney. The disclosure of any such information, except as necessary to permit the sharing of information and evidence with the Attorney General or a district attorney, constitutes a Class C felony. The only exception to this prohibition against disclosure is the requirement that the commission provide discovery to respondents pursuant to the Alabama Rules of Criminal Procedure. The Rules of Criminal Procedure permit defendants to inspect and copy written and recorded statements made by defendants or co-defendants. It also permits defendants to receive documents and tangible objects that fall within certain parameters, as well as reports of examinations and tests. However, those rules of discovery exclude certain items, including statements made by prospective state witnesses. Rule 16.1F states, nothing in this Rule 16.1 shall be construed to limit the discovery of exculpatory material or other material to which a defendant is entitled under constitutional provisions or other provisions of law. While Rule 16.1F does not limit the discovery of exculpatory material to which a defendant is entitled under constitutional provisions or other provisions of law, Rule 16.1 does not compel the production of exculpatory material if the defendant is not entitled to the exculpatory material under constitutional provisions or other provisions of law. Therefore, since the investigation conducted by the Ethics Commissions are subject to grand jury secrecy, the commission may only produce exculpatory material, which is not otherwise required to be produced under Rule 16.1A through D, if the constitutional provisions that provide defendants with the right to exculpatory material are applicable to respondents of an investigation into a complaint filed with the Ethics Commission, or if there are other provisions of law that entitle respondents to such material. When an investigation into a complaint filed with the commission is commenced, the Alabama Rules of Criminal Procedure as applicable to the grand jury process apply and remain in effect until the complaint is dismissed or disposed of in some other manner. And in all matters that come before the commission concerning a complaint on an individual, the laws of due process shall apply. The laws of due process are not defined, however, Section 6 of the Alabama Constitution provides several rights of persons in all criminal prosecutions, including the right to be heard by himself and counsel, to demand the nature and cause of the accusation and to have a copy thereof, to be confronted by the witnesses against him, to have compulsory process for obtaining witnesses in his favor, to testify in all cases on his own behalf if he likes to do so, and all prosecutions by indictment, a speedy public trial by an impartial jury. He also may not be compelled to give evidence against himself or be deprived of life, liberty, or property except by due process of law. Our administrative rule 340-X-1-01, the policy for handling cases being presented to the Alabama Ethics Commission, addresses several of the rights outlined in Section 6 of the Constitution of Alabama, and specifically limits those rights, including to be confronted by witnesses, the right to compel witnesses, and the right to a public trial or hearing. Prior to any hearing before the Ethics Commission, the respondent shall be given written notice that a complaint has been filed, a summary of the charges, an opportunity to testify, and the right to be represented by retained legal counsel. Neither the complaint nor the identity of the complainant is provided or required to be provided as they are protected by grand jury secrecy. The respondent shall be given an opportunity to testify but may not be compelled to do so. There is no right of cross-examination of witnesses by either the complainant or respondent. During the presentation of the complainant's case, neither the respondent nor their attorney may be present in the hearing room. The rules of evidence shall not be strictly applied, and hearsay testimony or evidence may be considered by the commission, and the respondent does not have a right to compel witnesses. The Fifth Amendment states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, and the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States requires the state to provide defendants with exculpatory material in his possession for a defendant to receive a fair trial. The U.S. Supreme Court established in Brady v. Maryland that the suppression by the prosecution of evidence favorable to accused upon request violates due process where the evidence is material either to guilt or to punishment, irrespective of the good faith or bad faith of the prosecution. And in US v. Bagley, the Supreme Court extended the Brady rule to include impeachment evidence as well as exculpatory evidence. And Opinion C, which is my understanding the AG's office as well as the Office of Prosecution Services prefers, states that because the laws of due process apply and Brady requires the production of exculpatory material in order to comply with due process laws, that the Ethics Commission is required to produce exculpatory material to comply with due process. The Office of Prosecution Services has pointed out in their response to our request for their comment that, in their opinion, the apparent conflict between the grand jury secrecy provisions referenced in 36-25-4C and the discovery provision of 36-25-4F, however, is resolved by the second paragraph of 12-26-216, which allows the state of Alabama to disclose grand jury testimony to be used for impeachment of a witness in a criminal trial, prosecution of perjury, and, relevantly, in any other matter otherwise permitted by law. The combination of the discovery required in Rule 16.1, the respondent's constitutional and due process rights as outlined in Brady, and its progeny are a man or otherwise permitted by law according to the proposed Opinion C. The Office of Prosecution Services also pointed out that Attorney General Opinion 94-126 addresses a similar conflict that appeared to exist between the Department of Examiners and the Public Accounts statute that also referenced the Grand Jury Secrecy Act in Section 12-26-216, and imposed a duty to have their work papers and documents peer-reviewed by outside parties. The Attorney General issued this opinion finding that the last sentence of Section 216 authorized such disclosure as it is any other manner otherwise permitted by law. Additionally, that opinion appears to extend disclosure of grand jury testimony to documents as well when it concluded that the Department of Examiners and Public Accounts were allowed to release work papers. Although that Although that opinion involved the application of a federal statute to the operation of the Examiners of Public Accounts and recognized that federal statute as controlling authority for the exception they made to the grand jury protection, it is nonetheless relevant to this issue in the absence of any other legal authority on this issue. Opinion C also proposed, would find that the laws of due process apply to investigations by the Ethics Commission, and for that reason, and in light of the Attorney General's determination that Brady applies to all cases pending before the Commission, and Rule 16.1F, Attorney General Opinion 94-126, and ALABAMA Code Section 12-26-216, that the Commission would conclude that the constitutional right of the respondent to be provided Brady material outweighs the grand jury protections put in place by the legislature. Therefore, the Brady requirements would be applicable to all cases before the Commission, and the Commission would be required to disclose any exculpatory information in its possession to respondents in cases before the Commission. Additionally, because what constitutes Brady material is fairly debatable, and there is no court to present material to for review, the only practical solution would be for the Commission to act in a manner similar to the circuit court and review any debatable witness statement submitted by the staff to determine whether it contains exculpatory information and should be produced to the respondent. If, after being presented with a report of an investigation, the Commission finds that an exhibit contains exculpatory information that has not been produced to a respondent, the Commission could either continue the hearing to a later date or dismiss the complaint. The Commission would not be permitted to have an open-file discovery, as that would disregard the grand jury protections provided in Section 4C. Since the Commission sends its entire case file to the District Attorney of the appropriate district or the Attorney General, the District Attorney or the Attorney General may, in their discretion, disclose to a defendant any exculpatory information received from the Commission, which the Commission has not produced, without violating grand jury secrecy restrictions of the Ethics Act that apply to information provided to the District Attorneys and to the Attorney General. However, Opinions A and B would find that to determine what constitutional process rights, what constitutional due process rights apply to the proceedings before the Commission, it would be necessary to consider the function of the Commission. The Ethics Commission has no independent authority to prosecute any violations of the Ethics Act. After receiving or initiating a complaint, the Commission has 180 days to determine whether probable cause exists. After a finding of probable cause by the Commission, the case and the Commission's findings shall be forwarded to the District Attorney for the jurisdiction in which the alleged acts occurred, or to the Attorney General. The case, along with the Commission's findings, shall be referred for appropriate legal action. The Commission's finding of probable cause does not toll the statute of limitations or restrict the prosecuting authority from taking any action or no action at all. Section 6 of the Constitution of Alabama of 1901 deals specifically with criminal prosecutions in which a person has been accused of a crime and will be deprived of life, liberty, or property if found guilty. The Ethics Commission does not adjudicate guilt and has no authority to sentence or punish any respondent. There are no writs issued based off a probable cause finding by the Commission, and no one is deprived of life, liberty, or property based on the referral for appropriate legal action to a District Attorney or the Attorney General. A District Attorney or the Attorney General may prosecute a person for violating the ethics law without the Commission first investigating the matter, and a prosecution may be initiated even if the Commission finds no probable cause. Therefore, a probable cause hearing with due process protections is not a prerequisite to prosecution as found in Hunt v. Anderson. In Givens v. the State of Alabama Ethics Commission, the Alabama Court of Civil Appeals, I'm sorry, the respondent appealed a probable cause finding by the Commission to the circuit court. The circuit court dismissed the petition and the respondent's appeal to the Court of Criminal Appeals. The Court of Criminal Appeals found that the circuit court had no jurisdiction to consider the petition because the Commission's probable cause determination was not a final decision in a contested case. The circuit court had no jurisdiction to review the determination, and its judgment of dismissal was avoid judgment. Givens provided the following description of the role of the Ethics Commission and its similarity, and its similarity to a grand jury. Givens stated that a probable cause determination by the Commission is a preliminary finding. It does not finally adjudicate a party's legal rights, duties, or privileges. As the Federal Court for the Middle District of Alabama observed, the State Ethics Commission does not perform an adjudicatory function, now as in Hunt v. Anderson. Instead, the Commission performs investigatory function much like a grand jury, and it cites United States v. Powell, where the Supreme Court stated that an administrative agency's investigative function in searching out violations with a view to securing enforcement of its enabling act is essentially the same as a grand jury's. Givens also cites Ex parte Gonzales, which stated that a grand jury sits not to determine guilt or innocence, but to assess whether there is an adequate basis for bringing a criminal charge. Gonzalez also goes on to say that the grand jury is an institution separate from the courts over whose functioning the courts do not preside, and that's when they cite United States v. Williams, another Supreme Court case. They say that rather, it serves as a kind of buffer between the government and the people. In Williams, the issue was whether a federal district court could dismiss an otherwise valid indictment because the government had failed to disclose to the grand jury substantial exculpatory evidence in its possession. The Supreme Court held that requiring the prosecutor present such exculpatory evidence would turn the grand jury, which has always been an accusatory body that sits to assess whether there is an adequate basis to bring an indictment, into an adjudicatory body sitting to determine guilt or innocence. There is no right to discovery at a preliminary hearing or a presentation to a grand jury determining probable cause. The foundation for the Brady Rule is for the accused to receive a fair trial at the adjudicatory phase of the criminal justice process. At the adjudicatory phase, the jury is the trier of facts and the judge is the trier of law. In circumstances where there is a question of whether evidence is exculpatory, the judge reviews that evidence in camera or in chambers, and determines whether the evidence is material and exculpatory, and therefore subject to being produced as Brady material. However, there is no tribunal or independent arbiter to make a similar determination in a hearing before the Ethics Commission because it is not an adjudicatory hearing. The Commission hearing is not a trial, and there is no finding of guilt or innocence. There is no cross-examination at a Commission hearing by anyone other than the Commission's staff or commissioners. There is no opportunity for a respondent to use impeachment evidence to test the credibility of a witness because there is no right to cross-examine any witness, or requirement that any fact witness testify for the Commission to find probable cause. Opinions A, the proposed Opinions A and B, would find that the intent of the Brady Rule and its progeny is to allow the accused the opportunity to present the fact-finder with information that may change the outcome of a trial in their favor. For their consideration at a hearing, the Commission is presented with all material information gathered by the investigator. Therefore, the Commission, who is the fact-finder, has all exculpatory and impeaching information upon which to base their decision about whether there is probable cause to believe that a violation has occurred and the intent of the Brady Rule is satisfied. Opinions A and B would also find that the effect of the application of the Brady Rule to a pre-grand jury proceeding would ignore the grand jury protection provided by the Ethics Act. Kyle v. Whitley established that regardless of whether there is a request, the State is obligated to disclose Brady material to the accused. The Commission investigates every complaint that contains credible and verifiable information that a violation may have occurred if the facts as set out are true. Many of the cases that are investigated are recommended by the agent to be closed based off of lack of probable cause. However, there is no way to know the result of an investigation until it is concluded, and the Commission reviews the evidence. Where the Brady Rule to be followed without exception by the Commission, the disclosure of exculpatory information, primarily witness statements, including their identities, would be required for all cases regardless of the anticipated outcome of the hearing. This requirement would be unnecessary in many cases where the respondent would not realistically be subject to being referred and may never know that investigation was undertaken because the complaint was dismissed. There is no statute or administrative rule requiring the disclosure of Brady material that exceeds the production permitted under Rule 16.1 pertaining to hearings and investigations conducted by the Ethics Commission. Additionally, while the applicable administrative rule restates the requirement for the Commission to provide discovery, it does not provide a requirement for the production of exculpatory information. Instead, the administrative rule specifies that the substance of any statements made by prospective witnesses are not discoverable, and it does not provide an exception for exculpatory information or Brady material. The proposed Opinion A would find that while the legislature articulated that the laws of due process shall apply to hearings before the Ethics Commission, they also specifically exclude due process rights provided in Section 6 of the Alabama Constitution, including the right to confront and compel witnesses. The legislature and the Commission each addressed due process rights in 1995 and 1998, respectively, and did not provide a right to exculpatory material. Instead, the legislature implemented grand jury protections to complaints and investigations conducted by the Commission, and the Commission specifically restricted discovery by stating that the respondent shall not be entitled to the substance of any statements made by prospective witnesses. Therefore, the Commission cannot assume the right to exculpatory evidence by a respondent is implied by the provision that the laws of due process shall apply because Section 6 of the Alabama Constitution does not apply outside of criminal prosecutions that will deprive the accused of life, liberty, or property found guilty. Further, it is the prosecuting authority's responsibility to comply with Brady, not the investigate authority. While the Ethics Commission has some function beyond mere investigations by determining whether probable cause exists to believe that a violation has occurred, the Ethics Commission does not act as a prosecutorial authority. District attorneys around the state and the Attorney General garner their authority from the Constitution of the State of Alabama. As constitutional officers of the court, they have the duty, they have the duty to comply with Brady in the exercise of that constitutional authority. Nothing in the statutory body that created the Ethics Commission divests or supersedes the authority of any District Attorney or the Attorney General. Therefore, the proper authority with the discretion and duty to assess and disclose what information might be exculpatory would be the District Attorney or the Attorney General rather than this Commission. Opinion A would further find that the Commission is not a court of competent jurisdiction that has been given the legal authority to order grand jury-protected information and evidence to be released to respondent, and cannot assume that role even in the interest of disclosure or fairness. Therefore, absent a specific statute or rule requiring disclosure of Brady material, the Commission would abide by the grand jury protections provided in the Ethics Act. The complaint, statements, evidence, or information received during an investigation, and Brady material would not be required or permitted to be produced to a respondent who is the subject of an investigation by the Commission. Therefore, unless exculpatory information fell within one of the categories of discoverable information provided within Rule 1, Rule 16.1A through D, the Commission would not be required or permitted to disclose exculpatory information or Brady material to respondents to complaints filed with the Ethics Commission. If the Commission were to find probable cause at a hearing, all of the investigatory material would be forwarded to the Attorney General or the District Attorney for their review. As is the case in every criminal prosecution, the prosecutor would be responsible for disclosing any exculpatory material or Brady material at the adjudicatory phase or trial of the The proposed Opinion B follows the same logic as Opinion A, however, it would find that the Commission would recognize the value of a respondent being provided Brady material to inform any presentation they might make to the Commission regarding their case and whether they want to petition the Commission to resolve their case administratively. Much like a district court judge's discretion to order discovery at a preliminary hearing, the Commission would be able to order the staff to produce whatever evidence it deemed appropriate for the respondent to hear, to receive a fair hearing. Opinion B proposes that therefore, in the interest of the due process rights of the respondent, the Commission, but not the staff, is permitted to but is not required to disclose evidence it determines is exculpatory to the respondent without violating the grand jury protections in the Ethics Act. So just for clarity, in far as which letters coincide to which conclusion, Opinion A would state that the Ethics Commission is not required or permitted to disclose exculpatory evidence or Brady material to respondents to complaints filed with the Ethics Commission unless it otherwise falls within the discovery provisions of Rule 16.1A through D. Opinion B would also find that the Ethics Commission is not required to disclose exculpatory information or Brady material to respondents to complaints with the Ethics Act, with the Ethics Commission, again, subject to those disclosure rules of 16.1. However, it would find that the Commission would be permitted to disclose evidence that they determine is exculpatory to the respondent without violating the grand jury protections in the Ethics Act. And finally, Opinion C would state that the Ethics Commission is required to disclose exculpatory material or Brady material to respondents to complaints filed with the Ethics Commission. And if I have all your leave, I would like to head downstairs while you all deliberate.
Does the Commission have any questions? Comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Commission has always given consideration and great respect to opinions that we get from the Attorney General's office, and I won't speak for them, but as has been stated, their position is that we do need to, and are required, to disclose the information that Mr. Patterson discussed. However, we've received, and we've received comments from the Office of Prosecution Services basically agreeing to that. However, yesterday, we received a message from Mr. Walt Merrill, who's the District Attorney of the 22nd Judicial Circuit, Covington County, stating the opposite. So, Mr. Executive Director, I wanted to call on you, if you would, just briefly state, for the record and for the persons gathered, the positions of what I would say are opposite positions.
Okay, well, I think that the opinions sent to you certainly set out what the Attorney General's position is and what Prosecution Services' position is. The email that you referenced tracks the...
Thank you. Tracks the reasoning of the A opinion that is submitted to you, which recognizes the authority, the constitutional authority, of District Attorneys and the Attorney General to make the decision about exculpatory evidence. And so what his conclusion was, and apparently that is one that is shared by a number of DA's, at least who he had talked to about it, that that was their constitutional authority, and that we did not have the legal authority to supersede that authority of theirs. But again, that position, I think, is adequately summarized in the A opinion that you have before you. Now, in fairness, I think there are a number of DA's who would also agree with the Office of Prosecution Services' position and the AG's position. So the A opinion can be read as preserving that issue for them to decide regardless of how they approach that disclosure issue within their own offices, but it would preserve the decision for them to make when the case is before them, the totality of the evidence is before them. But again, we can't ignore the fact that the Chief Law Enforcement Officer for the State of Alabama has stated in very clear terms what their opinion is, and that is why we have not advocated for one opinion over the other, and we think that is within your wise judgment to do that yourself.
Would anyone like to be heard? Yes, please step up and give us your name.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm just going to address that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Alana Kamak, and I'm with the Alabama Attorney General's Office, and we do appreciate your invitation to speak to y'all today.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So, our justice system depends on fairness to the accused. That fairness can only be effectuated if the accused is granted every opportunity to see exonerating evidence, any opportunity to see evidence that would show that he didn't do anything wrong. And that's why the Attorney General's position is that y'all would adopt Advisory Opinion Number 2022-3C, which would provide that y'all would continue to provide exonerating evidence to respondents, and that would not be a new obligation for your staff. Former General Counsel Hugh Evans, who held that position for almost 23 years, stated when asked that when he would receive an investigatory file from your case agents, he would go through that file, and he would look for all of the exonerating evidence, and if he found any, he would immediately produce it to defense counsel. That was his role since about 1995. So it is a longstanding practice of the Commission to provide exonerating evidence to the accused. And the ethics statute, your statute, provides that y'all comply with the laws of due process and with the rules of discovery in the Alabama Rules of Criminal Procedure. Alabama Code Section 36-25-4D reads, "In all matters that come before the Commission concerning a complaint on an individual, the laws of due process shall apply." Similarly, Alabama Code Section 36-25-4F provides that the Commission shall provide discovery to the respondent pursuant to the Alabama Rules of Criminal Procedure. That is a shall, it is not a may, so it is mandatory, not discretionary. Rule 16.1 Subsection C provides that the State shall provide any and all evidence to the accused that might assist or be material in the preparation of the accused's defense. Thus far, I've been unable to come up with a situation in which any accused would not like exonerating evidence and not find it material to the preparation of his defense. And to find that the Ethics Commission is not required to turn over exonerating evidence would be contrary to the ethics statute as it was enacted by the Alabama Legislature. Now, all three opinions also discuss grand jury secrecy. As y'all are aware, grand jury secrecy, the laws in Alabama at least, are generally that almost all grand jury proceedings are kept entirely secret. However, the grand jury secrecy statute has another provision that says that grand jury secrecy may be breached... secrecy may be breached if it is otherwise authorized by law. Alabama courts have held that one reason to breach grand jury secrecy would be to provide exculpatory evidence to the accused. So in that sense, the grand jury secrecy statute permits for the disclosure of exculpatory evidence to the accused. Brady is about honesty in government. This commission invites accused to come forward and present a case in their defense. Your Administrative Code Subsection 4A provides that you shall consider any evidence that the respondent wishes to be considered. You then essentially hide exonerating evidence, you're asking them to fight with one hand tied behind their back. And to hide evidence which could cast doubt on these decisions is a failure to comply with the laws of due process. Unfortunately, what this commission does can ruin lives and careers, and if exonerating evidence is not considered and presented in its appropriate context, that destruction might happen for no reason. The discussion about whether or not the Ethics Commission is permitted to hide exonerating evidence from these defendants is concerning not just to the Alabama Attorney General's Office, but also to the citizens of Alabama. Of all institutions, the people of Alabama deserve honesty and transparency from the Ethics Commission. To fail to recognize that evidence of innocence should be turned over is a failure to comply with the ethics statute and the laws of due process. Why would this commission change the longstanding practice that is turning over evidence of innocence to the accused? You shouldn't, and for that reason, you should adopt Advisory Opinion Number 2022-3C. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Let me ask you this, in light of, are you aware of the district attorney that I mentioned, his totally different opinion?
Yes, Chairman, I've read his thoughts.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I appreciate his insight as to the Brady requirements for prosecutors. His opinion didn't really cite to any of the ethics statute, and it didn't seem as if that was integrated with his opinions on the Brady requirements for prosecutors. And so I think because of the requirements that y'all comply with the rules of criminal procedure and the laws of due process, it adds an extra layer of nuance.
Do you have an opinion on exculpatory evidence being given that gives the identity of the complainant and whether or not that would have a chilling effect on persons complaining about possible ethics violations?
Again, I think that unfortunately, because the Alabama Legislature has mandated that y'all comply with the laws of criminal, or the rules of criminal procedure and the laws of due process, that is just a burden that the Alabama Legislature has placed.
Well, do you think it would have a chilling effect on complaints being filed if people knew that their names were going to be disclosed by the Ethics Commission to the accused?
I'm not certain, but I would hope not, in part because obviously we all want an honest and transparent government, so if someone sees something that is really problematic such that it needs to be reported to the Ethics Commission, then that's there. But also, people report crimes to the police and get called as witnesses, and they are made public as well, sometimes.
The Attorney General's Office in the past has given us guidance or opinion as to the conduct of the hearings that we have in executive session. And the rules as stated in the advisory opinion pretext says that neither the respondent nor their attorney has the right to be present during all of the hearing. Do you think that's, Attorney General, it seems to think that's not the proper way to conduct our business. Do you have an opinion on that? And if you haven't thought about it, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but are you familiar with the letter that's been sent to us in the past about the process of our hearings?
I am familiar with that, though I have not considered the specific issue as to whether or not the person should be present in the room during executive session.
Well, of course, they do come in and have their opportunity, but they're not present when the case is presented by our investigators.
Right.
What about hearsay testimony? Do you have an opinion on whether or not we should, the commission should consider that at the hearing stage?
Your administrative rules provide that the rules of evidence are not strictly considered, and therefore hearsay testimony is admissible, so...
One other question. In the Brady case, it stated that suppression by the prosecution of evidence favorable to an accused on request. So do you have an opinion as to whether, if the respondent in our case doesn't request that information, that we still have an obligation to disclose it under Brady?
Brady's progeny provides that the, so some later cases provide that the defendant does not have to ask for the Brady requirement. So if you have Brady, or at least our opinion is that if you have Brady evidence, you have an ongoing obligation to turn that over.
Any questions?
I do. Are you aware of any court decision that states that the Ethics Commission should provide exculpatory material or Brady material during its proceedings?
I am not.
Go ahead.
So, given that this is not an adjudicatory body, I think I'm hearing you say nevertheless that that's overcome by actual language in the act creating the Ethics Commission. Do I track, are we tracking together on that?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Would you narrow this for me a little bit and tell me where the act and the Ethics Commission is really on point, saying we should do this?
Certainly. It's in the code section that provides that y'all comply with due process. It is Alabama Code Section 36-25-4D.
Okay. Healthy interaction, okay?
Yes, sir.
We're required to comply with due process. That's kind of general because, well, that is general, although it's straightforward, I get that. But now, sometimes there's debate upon what due process really is and how far it goes, especially depending upon the body that you're in. A good question was asked a minute ago about hearsay, and you had a good response, our bylaws. Continue to track with me on this because I get it, it says due process, but I think we can find other things, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we can, find other things that are due process that don't apply in adjudicatory reviews or decisions or tribunals. You had a good answer on the bylaws about hearsay, but is there anything on point in bylaws that specifically addresses this?
It wouldn't specifically address this, though I would note for your consideration as well that in Hunt v. Anderson, so the state, it's a case that's been cited in the advisory opinions, the middle district of Alabama distinguishes y'all from a purely, say, investigatory body because of the way that y'all choose to conduct your official business. And so it changes the due process requirements a bit, which our opinion is, pulls you slightly out of the just solely investigatory function, which would then provide more, it then requires y'all to comply with the more stringent due process requirements.
But...
But no, it's not in your, I'm sorry, it's not in your administrative bylaws. That's, sorry.
But Hunt v. Anderson elevates our duty to comply with due process over and above an investigative body?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it does.
But not to the level of an adjudicatory body?
Correct.
That's what my other question was, I'm sorry. A large number of cases that are filed with the commission are investigated and then simply dismissed for lack of probable cause or because the allegations are found to be false. Is it your position that all this other material would be released to those people who, in many cases, never even know somebody's filed a complaint against them?
I believe the specific statute says that in all matters that come before the commission, which would, and it's in a similar section that talks about how y'all handle cases and how y'all hear cases. And so I believe it would apply to cases that come to a hearing, not in things that are simply looked at and then immediately dismissed, because at that point, you're not have, you're not required to comply with the due process requirements that are, for instance, in your bylaws, where you hold a hearing and you are inviting them to come and present a case, and you invite them to present evidence to y'all.
So it's your position that it would not apply unless they're actually asked to appear at a hearing?
Correct.
Going to Rule 16.1, what's your position on the statement, if it be true, I guess I'm asking if you think it's true, that that administrative rule requires us to provide discovery but does not provide a requirement for the production of exculpatory information? And the administrative rule says that even the substance of statements of prospective witnesses are not discoverable. How do you square that with the position that AG's office wants us to take?
Are you asking, I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying. Are you asking about the, like, Rule 16.1A where it talks about how witness statements other than your own statements are not discoverable, read in conjunction with?
Yes.
So with Brady material, that would be discoverable because if it's exculpatory. If it's not, then, if they aren't exculpatory, then 16.1A does not apply.
So we have to make a determination of whether it's discover, exculpatory or not, right?
Yes, sir.
It happens that at this time, three members of the commission are attorneys, but that's not necessarily so. And is what you've just stated a reasonable expectation for a late person?
I believe, so if you look at Brady's progeny, the, whether or not something is exculpatory, the tie goes to the accused, right? So in general, I think if the commission looks at the evidence and thinks, oh, this is something that could potentially help them and needs to be turned over, then it would fall under your purview to do so.
We'd all be a lot better off, wouldn't we, if there were a statute that specifically addressed this issue? Isn't that correct?
It would be easier, yes.
Or a case.
Or a case.
Yes, it would be easier.
We had a, oh, a county judge, but later became a district judge in my home county, and when he decided a case, he would tell the losing party, you knew you were going to lose when he said, I hope you'll appeal this. So regardless of what we do today, someone may appeal, and I guess we could get, we'll get further deration from the Supreme Court possibly.
Thinking of breath, I wasn't ready to ask it, but I think I will ask it anyway.
Going back to, is it Walt Merrill?
Yes.
Yeah. Going back to his letter, I think he makes the case, he's trying to make the case that the determination of, I want to make sure I state it correctly so you can argue it correctly, okay, so you can hit it head on. But I think he's making the case that the determination of what exculpatory evidence is, is almost solely in the hands of the district attorney. I believe he's saying that. And I think he's even citing constitutional language on that. So specifically there again, how are you overcoming that? Or you may disagree with the premise to begin with, but how do you overcome that?
Well, I don't necessarily think that that is the entirety, I don't think it's incorrect, but I think that it's not necessarily the entirety of the situation in that if you look at Brady's progeny, the prosecutors, the district attorney doesn't even have to know that evidence is held, if the police are holding evidence and they know that it's exculpatory, the prosecutor is responsible for turning that over. So even if the prosecutor does not necessarily know that it exists, so the hands of, who decides Brady evidence is not necessarily the district attorney. And in addition to that, there are, that evidence can be reviewed by a judge as well, so it's not necessarily, the district attorney does not get to decide what Brady is.
But it is a court that does. We don't have a mechanism for having that decision made by a court, unlike what would happen in a court proceeding that's moving through the system, whether it's at district court or grand jury or circuit court. There is a mechanism for making that determination.
I think...
By an elected person in Alabama who's authorized to make that decision.
But I think by the legislature stating that y'all are responsible for turning over, for complying with the laws of due process, they have enabled you to make that decision.
Excuse me, what was your first name again?
Alana.
So, help me with this, construct your, your parallel here. In our situation, who is the prosecutor? You know, in our hearings, I understand prosecutors having that obligation, but who's our prosecutor that we have control over that we, you know?
Yes, sir. I believe that it would be the Ethics Commission staff since they are the ones who are presenting the case to y'all.
Meaning investigators and legal staff?
Yes, Commissioner, I believe that's correct.
I imagine two scenarios, one where we pass that responsibility to a district attorney, and they choose not, they decide that the evidence is not exculpatory, someone's convicted, later that evidence is produced, and someone might have been found not guilty. I really have a problem that we've passed that on, okay? So I agree with that part of your argument. On the other hand, having been a prosecutor, I really don't want some, I agree with Mr. Merrill, I don't want somebody hamstringing me by putting evidence out there that I don't think is exculpatory. Obviously, the easy answer is we'll tell them everything. And as a defense attorney years ago, that's the way our district, our circuit worked, open file, you came in and saw everything. But I really, I have a problem hamstringing a district attorney if in fact that would hamstring them. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but the Alabama Legislature, when they passed their statute, decided to burden the prosecutors with that, and it's just something that they have to deal with and we have to deal with at the Attorney General's Office.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate y'all.
Anyone else that wants to be heard? A lot of good lawyers in here.
Those opinions, I don't think you want to hear them. I would like your tape of the AG's office, maybe it would be fair. Fine, so I'm going to get that after this. I think the...
Come on up.
I think the problem is, I think that, number one, if I had a hat, I would tip it to Brian Patterson and this lady right there, because they did an extremely good job on a very hard issue. And I think that Commissioner Stewart hit on the head, I think the laws, I think the laws are in valley, and I think you start with the Grand Jury Secrecy Act and the way it's written for the Ethics Commission, it's written badly, and it's too broad. I mean, y'all's Grand Jury Secrecy Act is broader than the AG's Act. And like you said, and what he had to argue was, you know, we're just a grand jury before the grand jury, but your Grand Jury Secrecy Act is broader than their Grand Jury Secrecy Act.
How's that?
I don't have it in front of me, but the...
And by the way, this is Bill Espino.
I bet she knows. I mean, the, the, y'all's, everything is protected, it's a very broad sentence that I think is interpreted and has been interpreted in different ways. And I think it interprets, it's interpreted very broadly, I think you can interpret it that way. I mean, mainly the Grand Jury Secrecy Act from an AGDA level in Alabama is, if something happens before the grand jury, you can't go tell people about it. Evidence is put before the grand jury, you can't go tell people about it. That's the Grand Jury Secrecy Act. The federal law is, you can really go in there and tell anybody that happens in front of the federal, except you can't tell somebody, I think a bank cannot tell somebody that they got a subpoena for their records. That's the federal grand jury subpoena, that's it. So y'all's is interpreted different ways. But one way is it's so broad that if an agent goes and speaks to somebody that what they said to them is secret, but I think that's way too broad. I think if I get a document, or it's interpreted, everything y'all do and everything y'all get is a grand jury secrecy besides like just what happens in here. So I think the way it's interpreted, it might be broad, I think it's interpreted by very smart people different ways. And I think if you look at... And I think if you look at, you can look at the Philip McCollum situation, and you can look at how unworkable that Grand Jury Secrecy Act was, mainly for your staff, in my opinion. When we were trying to deal with that and unwind that and do the best job everybody could in that situation, you had a lot of different people representing, a lot of people to come to this situation, and I think it hamstrung your staff on, well, wait a minute, I can't tell these people, this grand jury secrecy is so broad, I can't share. I mean, in fact, I think when that thing was over, and he paid all his fines on his administrative resolution, I think, and I could be wrong about this, but I think that they can't even tell people, because of the way the Grand Jury Secrecy Act construed, exactly what he violated in all 13 of those things. Think about that. That's crazy.
And I think we don't say anything to anybody.
Yeah, that's crazy. I mean, think about that, that is crazy. I mean, somebody violates an ethics law, and the Grand Jury Secrecy Act and the way it is interpreted, when y'all provide somebody administrative resolution, you don't, you just say they violate the ethics law, you don't say what they say. I think that's a progeny of the way the Grand Jury Secrecy Act is interpreted, and I think that is the problem. I think there's a sentence in there, and I don't have it in front of me, and I bet she could quote it verbatim, but that should be stricken out of there, and like I said, that's not y'all's job. But I think that is the first problem with what can you actually provide to somebody. There's then, I mean, Mr. Patterson did a way better job than I could, going through all the different convoluted ways and problems that you have. One, you're a grand jury before a grand jury, right? But you also, I mean, when you find probable cause against somebody, it gets in the paper, I mean, what is your property rights? You can take somebody's money from them, right? So you're a little different than most of your other people or other administrative resolutions.
We can't, we can't do it, I'm going to correct you on that, we can't take their money.
Okay.
The DA or the Attorney General.
Oh, because they sign off on it, you're right.
That's right.
You're correct. But it's a little different, I mean, it's a little different than, your name gets in the paper for you probably violated the ethics law. And due process and the way you get stuff is very important as a defense lawyer, what you get in a long time fight for years is, what should they give me, right? And it's hard in every situation, and it's followed out, and I fought with them over it, I fought with DAs over it, I fought with several people over it, and it's very hard to determine what you should and should not, and it's probably kind of what she said, it's a gut reaction, oh, well, they should probably get this. But I think the problem is, what y'all's problem is, is the way that thing's written, the way it has been construed, and what can I give to people? And I think if you walk through it, obviously, people can disagree on different sides, I'm obviously a defense attorney, and for the first time, I'll agree with the AG. But I don't see why you shouldn't give it to them. I'd have a big problem if I was sitting on a commission, and a person walked in here without a lawyer, right? They don't have me, they don't have Greg Butcher's, okay? And they come in here by themselves, and they don't know what's going on, they don't know what, and they get up here and say a bunch of stuff, and y'all know it in the back of your mind, but you don't tell them, okay? And y'all find them not guilty because of it, but they never knew it, and it's intimidating, and it's also a mental state of mind that all of you people maybe let me go, but y'all might think I'm a crook, when the whole time, y'all knew I wasn't. I think I would lean towards kind of what she said, in the fairness of it, in my opinion. But like I said, I'm a defense lawyer, so obviously, it's tainted, but I think it's a very, very, very difficult issue because of the way that statute's written, but I think the overriding thing, and more important thing, is somebody's due process rights and what's right and what's wrong. But I think he did a very good job of it, and I think she did an amazing job of it, too, but I think it's pretty difficult.
Would you agree that the Grand Jury Secrecy, at least in this context, is perhaps intended to protect both sides? It's intended to protect the respondent from having stuff said when he may not be found to, there may not be probable cause if they did that? But it's also, isn't it, or I think it is, maybe, at that stage of the proceedings, also to protect the complaining witness?
I think it can be, I think that, and I've seen you do it different ways, I think sometimes when you dismiss somebody's complaint, you say their name, and you say that there hasn't been probable cause, and you dismiss it. So in that case, it doesn't protect those people, because it still gets in the paper, and I've still represented people, but they say, hey, somebody filed an exculpatory, these people, but people said there wasn't stuff there, but their name still gets out there. And also, when somebody files a complaint on you, they don't really like you, and I know that they get protected, they go tell everybody they filed it, by the way, and it's out there, and it don't really help the people, so my clients aren't ever really protected by it, to be honest with you, because the people who filed the complaint hide behind it, but they go tell everybody, in fact, they give everybody a copy of it, is what really happens. Because if you file a complaint on, I get in a fight with my dad about this all the time, he's like, these people don't like you. I said, well, nobody files a complaint on you, and they're your best friend. But I think you, I'm not saying that you shouldn't have a Grand Jury Secrecy Act, I think it should be more in akin, in the more way used as it is in the AGDA's thing, I think yours is way too big and way too broad. I think that's the problem. I think you can still protect people, I think it's way too broadly interpreted, way probably used.
For the record, that was Bill Espie, who's the attorney here in Montgomery.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Would the AG's office want to respond in any way? He agreed with you, I think, so. Would anyone else like to be heard? Attorney, citizen, anyone? All right. Any further comments or discussions by the commission? Not, I will entertain a motion, if one, someone wants to make one.
Well, I will, so that we can move forward, and I'll make a few comments as I do so. I move that we adopt the A opinion, and the reason is this, in my mind. The Ethics Commission is a body created by statute, it has very limited authority, extremely limited authority, and we have a set of statutory rules that are out there that we are supposed to follow, and then we have these administrative regulations that sort of are layered on top of that. There are two issues for me, one is, because it's clear that at some point in time, exculpatory material is something that a respondent or a criminal defendant is entitled to, and additionally, they're entitled to Brady material. The issue is, when are they entitled to that information? When should that information be provided to them? And then secondarily, who should provide the information to them? And I have always been and still am a strict constructionist, that is, I look at exactly what the law says, and I look at exactly what the cases say, and I believe our position in interpreting the Ethics Act, as we're charged with doing, is to say what the law is, not what it should be. And I think that we would obviously be a lot better off if we had a statute that was clearer about what we were supposed to do. I just don't see that we have the authority to expand upon what's there and declare that we have certain obligations or responsibilities or rights, for that matter, or obligations, to determine something. And I believe it was important that we set forth these opinions and that we make a decision, and this may not be the one that's ultimately adopted today, but that there be a decision that will be appealable by someone if they wish to do so. And of course, if the legislature changes it, or if there's a court of competent jurisdiction that orders us to provide these materials, obviously, we would provide it. I just, it's my opinion that we don't have the authority to expand the statute or expand the cases that exist and provide ourselves with expanded authority.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is four zero.
I want to say thank you to the two lawyers who came and commented today, and for those who wrote us, who didn't appear today, and there were several who had other obligations and couldn't appear in person, but told us that had they not had those obligations, they would have, and I think the input's been very, very important.
Yes, sir.
It didn't occur to me until we were just mentioning it.
Would you just state your name for the record, please?
Just a clarifying question, I didn't see the materials ahead of time, is this an administrative rule, or is this an advisory opinion?
Advisory opinion.
Okay.
And I think it's clear that the legislature is being asked to act on this and/or a court of competent jurisdiction. And I would just state, personally, I agree with Chief Justice in that material that we pass to Attorney General's Office or to district attorney still is subject, they're still subject to disclosing that information to the accused, and I think that if nothing else, that serves as a backstop for anything that might be lost by an accused, their name reputation, and I agree that that is a problem. That concludes the business that we have on the agenda. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 2nd at 9:30, and this, or actually, it's going to be in the Purchasing Auditorium at the RSA Union Building, first floor, had a conflict for the use of this room. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.